Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Here. Kelvin?
Here.
Flaherty? Flowers? Brady?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
And Guanci?
I am here. Councilor Houseman, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. It's nice to be able to depend on you every two weeks. Much appreciated. I am going to read my remote script before somebody tells me that I forgot. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Confirming member access. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Thumbs up, everybody. Good stuff. Thank you. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation because we have two public hearings, one scheduled at 7:15 and one at 7:30. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some of our attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you've broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me, the chair, to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22. All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed and subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and a vote thereon. However, if the council may, by majority vote, order any matter pending before subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be forthwith returned to the council. So all that means is rather than refer things to committee, we'll take our votes on the floor, provided that we have a majority vote after we take a roll call. So Ms. Kent, roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Kelvin? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady? Houseman?
Yes.
Rand? Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Meeting ground rules for public hearings. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute slash unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties in strictly the city council. It's not for public comment. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. So what we'll do is after the public hearing, after the presenters give their presentation during the public hearing, we'll go to the council for questions and comments, and then if anybody else has any questions or comments, just type your name in the chat, and then I'll recognize you. And I think that's it. Correct, Ms. Kent? You would think we would all know that by heart. All right, we have a resolution, so why don't we take that? And we're going to turn it over to our resolution king and queen. Counselor from Ward 1, Todd Rotundo, and Ward 5 City Councilor Kathleen Feldman. You've done a great job so far, guys.
Thank you.
You're on.
Thank you. Counselor, you want me to take this one, or you want us to...
Sure, yeah. We're going to round out our thank you road show.
So again, Mr. President, fellow councilors, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this resolution to you. I like to refer to it as the trilogy. We recognize that the public health emergency has placed a disproportionate strain on our region's FEMA response unit, who are continuing to volunteer their time and resources to serve our community and beyond. These brave men and women work regardless of their personal health and safety in the early days of the global pandemic with limited PPE and limited knowledge of this, excuse me, virus and...
Whereas the Massachusetts Task Force 1, M A T F 1, sponsored by the City of Beverly, Massachusetts, maintains the heritage established by the Lexington Minutemen at the onset of the American Revolution. The spirit of cooperation and volunteerism that sustains the vitality of a democratic society as well as the infrastructure of emergency response. Massachusetts Task Force 1 Urban Search and Rescue Team is located in Beverly, Massachusetts. Urban search and rescue teams are composed of police, fire, EMS, and civilians, 80 total people when deployed, and respond to major disasters under a contract with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. Currently, there are 275 people on the M A T F 1 team.
Whereas all team members must do a minimum of 60 hours per year of unpaid training of service time to remain on active status. Neither FEMA nor the City of Beverly pay members per service or training time. Last year, prior to COVID, 260 members contributed over 16,000 hours of unpaid time. Whereas during the pandemic, the M A T F 1 was activated to respond to both COVID-related emergencies as well as natural disasters nationwide.
Whereas during the early months of the pandemic in the spring of 2020, the team supported local efforts in a variety of departments to slow the spread and save lives. Six members of the task force reported daily with incident action plans. The task force supported nursing homes and other related assisted living facilities, delivering 119,000 items of PPR and critical supplies. M A T F 1 also acted as the central agent for purchasing and distribution of PPE for schools and other city departments. During this time period, the task force constructed an outdoor training pavilion as well.
Whereas in addition to the emergency response needed related to COVID, M A T F 1 responded to natural disasters nationwide this year, further risking both exposure and their lives. Among their deployments were 29 task force members were deployed to support the Oregon wildfires; 48 task force members were deployed to Hurricane Lara; three task force members were deployed to assist in Louisiana after Tropical Cyclone Delta; two team members to Hurricane Zeta in Louisiana; and one member of the team to both Hurricanes Beta in Texas and Sally in Florida.
Now therefore, be it known that the Beverly City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Beverly, wishes to express the utmost gratitude for and pride in the hard work in Massachusetts Task Force 1. The Beverly City Council and the citizens of Beverly understand that these dedicated men and women risk their lives to help others and represent our community at the national level. We hereby commend them for their sacrifice and their service.
Great work.
Oh, hi. I'm Mark Foster. I've been the Emergency Manager Director of the City of Beverly for over 40 years. And during that time, the City of Beverly has always supported our program. We have a good program, we need good people, and our team is lucky to have a great team members from all six New England states. Of course, we could never do this alone. It's only with the cooperation of the fine people in our city government to be able to accomplish the work we do. As an example, during Hurricane Florence, FEMA asked us if we could send a second team to assist with flooding in North Carolina. For all our primary vehicles have been deployed with our first team, so Mike Collins was able to loan us a brand-new city plow truck, which we reconfigured as a water rescue vehicle, and were able to perform many additional water rescues in Columbus, North Carolina. I believe they were on one of the morning TV shows, too. And I've asked Lisa, I sent a little video that Lisa can distribute to you afterwards. It shows them down there with our truck. And I would like to, on behalf of the team, I'd like to thank Todd Rotundo and Kathleen Feldman and all of our city councilors for this nice recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, and it's good to see your bride, Robin, is behind you, making sure that you did everything right. You only know...
And you're a good woman, you know.
Yeah, and you all may know Robin as being the Assistant Director of the Greater Beverly Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for all you both do. Does anybody have any questions or comments to make?
Mr. President, I just recognized Jim Hill, who's also here on the call, who's part of the task force team.
Great.
And he's been very instrumental in a lot of local stuff. I personally have had the fortune to work with him during the bonfires and some of the events we have locally, so I just want to make sure he was recognized also. And Mark, thank you again so much for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Special thanks, of course, to Councilor Rotundo and Councilor Feldman. We look forward to your next resolution in a couple of weeks, right?
We're taking a break. We're thankful. We're ending with Thanksgiving, so...
Well, you've done a great job. So I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Why don't we do this? We do have one public speaker who signed up to speak this evening, but let's take care of our 7:15 public hearing first. So Ms. Kent, could you, I'm going to call to order this public hearing on order number 232. Ms. Kent, could you read that, please?
Communications from the National Grid Petition Plan 29408, 2989. Install a center line at the intersection of Bailey Ave. and Foster's Point.
And Michael Byrne from National Grid is here. Mr. Byrne?
I am here. We're requesting to install one 3-inch PVC conduit from existing Woodpole 2765 to the corner of the property of Number 7 Foster's Point for the purpose of providing electric service.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Any questions or comments on this from members of the city council? Councilor Rotundo, this is in your ward.
Looked good. I drove by there today. It's the new home that's being built down there.
One of the best-kept secrets in the city, that area is. Do any members of the public wish to make a comment or ask Mr. Byrne a question? If so, please type your name in the chat. I don't see anybody, so I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
And a roll call, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Kelvin? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, and now I would like to point a motion to approve National Grid's request.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Kelvin? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
And yes. So now, next on our agenda, we have Ms. Jenna Meyer. Jenna, are you still here, or mayor?
Hi, yes, this is Jenna Meyer.
Hi, Jenna Meyer.
Hi.
The floor is yours for five minutes.
All right, great. Well, thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight. I'll try to be quick. I'm here to report a rat problem in the Beverly Cove neighborhood. I moved here two months ago, and on the first day I moved in, I saw a rat in the daytime. Since then, my husband and I have seen several rat sightings in and around Kimball Haskell Park. I canvassed neighbors, and they've said they've had problems with rats for years in this neighborhood, and in fact, it's gotten increasingly worse over the years. I called the Public Health Department and the mayor's office when I saw these sightings, and I was told several times it was a homeowner's problem. But I think this is just kind of unacceptable. As homeowners, we can do as much as we can to prevent rodents in our own property, but this is futile, as, you know, we're never going to get to the source of the problem. You know, I think public health is a matter of communication and education, and as citizens, we look to our local government for those centralized public health efforts. I think there's, you know, I don't really know what the right solution is, but I'm sure there's lots of stuff the city could do to take this under control. You know, I know other cities and towns have online portals or phone numbers where citizens can call and report information, reports, some sightings, you know, communications to citizens about how to keep their property safe, you know, really like make this a really concerted effort to their citizens. Bait and trap public properties. Again, I don't really know what the right solution is. I just am here to report the problem and hope that the city can take an interest, especially, you know, this is a playground where I live across the street. I see kids there all the time. It really is a public health risk, so I wanted to bring it to this council.
Thank you, Jenna. Much appreciated. And possibly your ward four, Councilor Houseman, and myself, seeing that I'm your neighbor, we could follow up with the Board of Health and maybe Public Works, and there's something that we might be able to do. I know there's probably, maybe this is something we can do with the Lawrence Brook that sometimes runs high behind your house, that rats seem to be attracted to. So, Councilor Houseman, you on it with me?
Yeah, I've actually met with Jenna and her husband, and more or less have had, you know, sort of the same roadblock, if you will, in terms of trying to come up with a solution. I think it would be terrific if the city, if the administration could come up with a sort of, with a Board of Health, something. I mean, I'm no expert in the area, but there does seem to be an issue down there, and it would be great if there can be a concerted effort to develop a program that would address this issue. I know that, you know, this is not the first time the council have heard, you know, residents bringing this issue forward, and ultimately, I mean, we can work with the administration on this, but it would be terrific if we could join in some leadership to come up with a program on this.
All right. Okay, now that everybody's aware of it, we'll all put our heads together and try to come up with something.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, and thanks for already meeting with your constituent. Good work. Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you.
All right, we'll try to follow up as soon as we can.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Our next public hearing is for 7:30, so let's get some council work done while we have 12 minutes or so. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of three of our previous meetings. One was held on October 5th, 2020, one on October 19th, 2020, and one on November 9th, 2020. Motion moved. Twelve minutes?
So moved.
And a roll call, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Kelvin? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Kent, let's start with communications from his honor, the mayor.
Order number 245. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $61,750 district incentive grant for COVID-19 response funds. This grant funding is part of a regional grant which will benefit several North Shore communities. Beverly has received the aforementioned funding via the Grants Coast Community in Salem. The funding is specifically for local health with a priority towards COVID-19 surveillance and cause case identification, including contact tracing. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for this prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, November 23rd. Thank you sincerely, yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And I just want to recognize that we have the honor. Mayor Cahill just logged in. And either he might want to comment on this one, or we have Ms. Catherine Barrett, who is Director of Grants. Ms. Barrett, you good on this one?
Yes, I am. We actually received this grant back in April as well for about $37,000. It's a regional grant that is being distributed by the state specifically for COVID-19 contact tracing and for the Public Health Department, so congratulations to Bill Burke.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Barrett? I have to check my chat. Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Second?
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Kelvin? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Ms. Kent, order number 246, please.
Order number 246. Dear Honorable City Council, on November 9th, 2020, by order number 229, you approve the request for the city to lease four parking spaces at the Lower Pond Street parking lot for the city's first DC fast-charging station installation project. Order 229 is attached to your convenience. I am submitting this request today to add three spaces to the project, so that the project will include up to seven leased spaces at the Lower Pond Street lot. Please let me know if you require additional information or if there's any questions I can answer. I respectfully ask for your support of the important DC fast-charging station project. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Yes, and Mayor Cahill, I'm sure you want to address this for the council.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Good to see everybody. Yeah, yes, when we brought forward the request at last meeting that you folks approved leasing out spaces in the Lower Pond Street lot for Level 3 fast EV car charging stations, we should have brought, we should have, we should have said that we were looking for up to seven. The communication said we were looking for four, so that's my mistake. I apologize. What we found out in terms of interest expressed in a possible RFP here is that respondents may ask for up to six. They may be more likely to ask initially for fewer, and then as those kind of prove themselves out as good investments, or should I say, probably more likely they will, but it's, as demand shows itself to be greater, they may look to bring on additional of the spaces during the course of the lease. So there is a map connected that was submitted along with this that just shows you where the spaces are, the row of spaces. And we also anticipate that the space closest to the Pond Street wall is most likely to be needed for charging infrastructure, so we'd be looking at the next six spaces which make up the rest of that row. So that's really the ask. I will say, just as a, as a point of interest, that lower lot is getting a lot of attention from us at this point because we have a dual-port Level 2 EV charger coming in. We have three of them coming in that you folks, some while back, partially with National Grid and state grant funding. And those are coming in any day, and so on the other row, on the other side, we'll have two spaces taken up with the Level 2 city-owned charging station. And then in that same parking lot, as I think you all know, when we did the RFP about a year ago for additional solar arrays in Beverly, it included several solar canopies. So that parking lot is one of the lots that are going to get a solar canopy over. So there's a lot happening there in terms of solar and electric, clean electric renewable energy. What, you know, what's here before you with this letter and this request is the additional three spaces along that row for future Level 3 fast charging.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Councilor Rand has a question.
Thank you. I love maybe, I love the idea of kind of branding that lot as like just, you know, a little oasis of renewable energy and using the space like that. I think that's a perfect lot for that. I am a little hesitant about the additional three spaces, and maybe there's just, I guess, just to explain my hesitation is that I've received recently a couple of inquiries in the Pond Street area asking if some of the public lot there can be used for residential parking because the streets are, as you can imagine, more full than usual because more, maybe more people are home, patterns have changed. Or maybe that's even more of a long-term shift in, you know, parking, on-street parking usage on Pond Street. But I don't know, Mayor Cahill, through you, President Guanci, to Mayor Cahill, if you could maybe speak to the possibility of having some more residential spaces in the Pond Street lot, or we could perhaps talk about it offline, but it would help me to know that for this vote tonight.
Sure, that, you know, there's, what we know, and this is pre-COVID, this is kind of regular times, is that that lot has been underutilized, and there is capacity to take these spaces and dedicate them to EV charging. As a policy, when we put in place the new downtown parking program a couple of years ago now, we dedicated and designated the on-street, sent largely the on-street between Cabinet and Rantool, when you get a little bit away from Cabinet and Rantool into the neighborhoods, as up to four-hour parking for anyone, right, but four-hour limit. And in addition to that, that those on-street were dedicated for anyone who signed up for the downtown parking program, so it's no charge to residents, right? It was just, we have to make sure we know they're residents, right? And people can park 24 hours a day on those, in those spaces, if they're residents. We did not, as a policy, make the parking lots available for that same purpose because the parking lots, with the exception of that lower lot at Pond, the other, the other main lots in the downtown get very regular significant use during the busiest times. And for us, our busiest times are the dinner hour on Friday and Saturday nights when the restaurants are going, you know, full bore and the theaters have shows. I think, you know, we'll see, hopefully, more and more that during the daytime hours as well, we'll see that demand in the main part of the lots. They, we have been working with some neighbors in that area who have seen neighbors of theirs who used to park their cars overnight in some of the lots. Now we're parking their cars on the street, so they're competing with their neighbors. And, you know, they, it's really a preference for being right at your front door, right? I mean, they're public streets, they're public spaces, and there are people who want to be right at their front door instead of down the street or around the corner. They can, any one of them can park in the lots from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM free of charge. If they're going to, if they're going to be parking before 8:00 PM, it's a quarter an hour. If they don't move them until after 8:00 AM, they may find themselves getting a ticket if they don't put in a quarter an hour there. But, you know, that's, that's been something we've been managing with the new, with the new program that, as I said, is now in place for quite some time. I don't know if that's, that's helpful to your understanding, however, counselor.
Follow-up, Councilor.
Excellent, thank you. I guess, you know, it would be really great, I think, to do at this time, especially considering that this lot is being used because of its low usage. Maybe it's a good time to just review some of those new parking policies and consider whether there's been a change in the downtown parking, and maybe it's time to say one of those lots can hold some residential parking before 8:00 PM. You know, especially if we can give up nine spaces in that lot, it sort of feels like, I shouldn't say give up, because it's, you know, quite possible that people, when the Cabinet reopens, people coming to the theater will be there in their electric vehicles. And actually, I can't wait to see that. But I think it's worth reviewing the overall... But I think it's worth reviewing the overall parking patterns, and luckily the kiosks have that data, so I guess I'll just commit to doing that with you, to reviewing specifically that area to see what the changes have, have been over the past year or so.
Yeah, no, happy to look at all that with you. You know, as, as I said, any downtown resident can park from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM in the lots. It's just, you know, if they're gonna park during the hours of enforcement, they need to be ready to put a quarter in for an hour. You know, part of the, part of the designation of the lots, the way they've been designated is to make sure that, that the downtown businesses have, that their patrons have access to parking in the downtown as well. And, and as you rightly pointed out, Counselor, I want to just reinforce, you know, that we're trying to right-size the provision of EV charging infrastructure right now. You know, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but, you know, the six spaces over three parking lots for Level 3 chargers, which was a decision we all made together, really going back about a year and a half now. And the request here to designate up to seven spaces, you know, it may well be that not all of them are, are taken up in the early years of the lease. Maybe the response for the RFP is for fewer spaces than that, but the option for more. And I know that, that, you know, that option for more is a, is a part of what different parties have an interest in as well. But, you know, looking at, with our total downtown census of parking spaces, which I, we can double-check the total number, I used to have it in my head, but, you know, looking at six for Level 2s and up to seven for Level 3s is probably right sizing for the, you know, for the next few years.
All right. I know Councilor Houseman has a question on this, but at 7:30, we're gonna have to come back to Order Number 246. And Ms. Kent, if you're ready, I'll call to order our 7:30 public hearing on Order Number 231. Could you please read that?
Dear Honorable City Councils of Beverly, Board of Assessors, respectfully request that the council schedule a public hearing on December 7th, 20, oh, sorry, November 23rd, 2020, relative to the allegation of fiscal year 2021 tax levy percentages among the four classes of real and personal property, in consideration of the adoption of open space, residential, and small business exemptions. Thank you very truly, yours Peter Karen.
And our Chief Assessor, Mr. Peter Karen is here. Peter, nice to see you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you, Counselors. As my letter stated, the purpose of this meeting is for the assessors to provide information to the City Council for purposes of executing their duty in determining how the taxes for FY21 will be allocated between the residential and commercial industrial personal property classes. It's an annual exercise. This is the last, one of the last steps before the process, tax bills can be mailed out. And I realize there's a few new Counselors on, so I thought I'd take a few minutes to just give a general overview of the process, how we get to this point, and how tax rates are set. I'm gonna bring up a, a little document here for your review. Okay. There's basically three elements that go into setting the tax rate. One of the first steps is determination of the tax levy. The tax levy is basically how much we're gonna raise in taxes this year, and it's basically a function of adding up all the various costs needed to run city government for FY21, which includes the city budget and also includes some additional costs like state charges on the cherry sheet and the overlay account, and deducting from those all the non-property tax revenue sources, all the non-property sources of revenue. And the balance that's left at that point is basically the tax levy. That's what we need for the tax, from the taxpayers to operate city government at the level that's been determined for FY21. That limit is obviously controlled by Prop 2.5. The levy limit for FY21 is 100, it's over $112 million. The actual levy will always be a little less than the levy limit because of rounding on the tax rates. We can't, we can't, even if it's due to rounding, we still can't exceed the levy limit. So usually, there's always an adjustment of a penny or two down from what the indicated rate is in order to stay under that levy limit. It's important to note that Prop 2.5 has no impact on individual tax bills. Prop 2.5 only limits the total amount of taxes the city can collect in each and every year from the taxpayers. How those taxes are allocated are a function of property values and a function of the classification, which the council will decide later tonight. Everything that's being presented tonight presumes that the maximum levy for a particular option is being raised. Now, it's important to realize that not all appropriations have been completed for FY21. I anticipate that there will be a supplemental budget coming for the council for next month. Now, we're assuming that once that's passed, that we will be raised to levy limit. So that's how the information is presented tonight. The second portion of determine, how we get to a tax bill is determination of property Property, state constitution, state law requires that the assessors assess all property at its full and fair cash value each and every year. The market value for this year is based on January 1st, 2020. Basically, we look for single-family condos, two families, three families. We look at sales of those similar properties and adjust everybody's value based on those sales. Commercial property is basically a function of income and expenses because that's typically, we don't have, we don't typically get a lot of apartment building sales or commercial industrial sales, but those properties do, when they do sell, sell based on the income they generate and the cash flow they generate. So that's the analysis we do to come up with values for those properties. It's important to note that, as you may hear from your constituents, come after the bills are issued, there is no allowance for COVID in the assessments for FY21. The assessment date is January 1st, 2020. At that point in time, COVID essentially did not exist. It wasn't until December 31st of last year that the Chinese government even announced that there was an outbreak of a disease in Wuhan. So there was no impact at all on property values for FY21 from COVID. Whatever impact COVID's had on property values since the pandemic started will be reflected next year in FY22 assessments. We will look at, you know, obviously for commercial industrial properties, there'll be issues with rents, apartment buildings, are people paying their rents? Those type of issues will all be reflected. I would point out that so far, we have not seen any, whatever impact has happened on the residential side has not affected the continued appreciation of residential properties. I expect residential property values to continue to go up for single families, condos, two families and three families for FY22, but that's what will happen. And the final step in the process is the allocation of the tax levy. The City Council, with the mayor's approval, determines how the tax levy will be allocated between residential and commercial taxpayers within the constraints of Prop 2.5. Even though, it's important to remember that even though discussions typically, and this is not just in Beverly, and every city and town usually revolves around what commercial factor to adopt, the way the law is written is that you must vote the corresponding residential factor for purposes of your vote tonight. So, you know, the, if you choose what the mayor's recommended, 1.736, you will vote for the corresponding residential factor that corresponds to that factor. There are also three exemption options that are available, of which, two of which are moot at this point because there's a residential exemption and there's also a small commercial exemption. Under, under the classification law, those decisions rest with the mayor. If, it can only be adopted if the mayor recommends a residential exemption or a small commercial exemption. The mayor has made no such recommendation, so there are, the council has no authority or ability to vote one of those tonight. There is an open space exemption, which does, the decision does rest with the council. However, there's only one or two properties in the city that are classified as open space, and we would recommend not adopting a factor for open space. You know, once all these steps have been completed, and that includes, and that obviously includes the finalization of a supplemental appropriation, we would, the city would then submit all the documentation to the DOR for approval of the tax rate, and once that rate is approved, actual that tax bills are then sent out to the taxpayers. Obviously, I present some information to the Counselors. I'll bring up each of the handouts we gave out. If any Counselors have any questions about those, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Let me bring up the...
Oh, good, Mr. Karen?
Yeah.
Okay. How about our Finance Director, Mr. Els? Do you have anything to add before we go to the council for questions?
I would just add, just to kind of very quickly summarize what Mr. Karen presented, the vote this evening that we're taking is how to allocate the tax burden between the residential and the commercial. That's what's called the shift. So it's really, regardless of what the, the tax levy ends up being, once all the appropriations are made, this vote this evening is to determine how much, what percentage of the total tax levy each sector will be burdened with this, this year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Els. And our Budget Analyst, Mr. Jared Perry is here. Mr. Perry, do you have anything before we go to questions?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. I have reviewed all the documentation presented by Mr. Karen and the Board of Assessors. In my view, traditionally, Mr. Karen does a great job. I agree with everything he has said in terms of the technical components as far as setting the tax rate. And both Bryant and Peter has articulated the role of the council is to vote the shift tonight and not necessarily vote the tax rate, but in essence, by voting the shift, it does kind of backfill into the rate itself. The, the goal of the administration, the mayor and the assessors is to try to even off the, the increase in taxes between the classes as best as they can, looking at their formulas. The tax shift of 1.7 and change, whatever it is that they're recommending, I, in my view, does achieve that. It certainly, they can't go up 20% which this tax rate shift does do based upon the appropriations of the City Council. And I think they've done a pretty good job in doing the best they can to try to even off the, any spikes going up. That said, Mr. President, members of the council, it's my recommendation as your Budget Analyst to approve the proposal as submitted by the Board of Assessors for the city of Beverly. I'm more than happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Questions or comments? Counselor Feldman, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I just have one quick question on the, I'm not 100% clear on the exemptions part, the 3.3 in the recommendation with the open space. You had mentioned that there were a couple of open space exemptions, but you wouldn't recommend them. I, I'm just wondering what those are and what that, more clarity on that.
There's three, there's three exemptions that are available to vote. There's a small residential exemption, which basically does not change the total amount of taxes collected from the residential class. What it does do is the council, council, if the mayor had recommended to adopt a residential exemption, the council would be able to vote a certain percentage. In other words, we would take the, the average value of a residential property in the city. The council could vote to adopt an exemption up to 35% of that amount, which would then be deducted from everybody's value across, if the property was owner-occupied. Okay? There's a, there's a problem with that in the sense that it works great on Nantucket, for example. In Nantucket, because you have all these multimillion-dollar homes that are not owner-occupied, or that are, that are second homes for people, they essentially help reduce the taxes on people like schoolteachers and firemen, et cetera, that live on Nantucket, and help allow them to live on the island because it subsidizes their taxes. In a city like Beverly, the problem is, is that obviously anybody living in an apartment complex or apartment building, they are likely to see increases in their rent because the taxes on those properties will go up substantially. What happens is, we reduce the values of all the owner-occupied properties, but we raise the tax rate in order to collect the same amount of money from the residential taxpayers. Not, two things happen. Anybody that's, any property that's not owner-occupied will see substantial increases in their taxes, including apartment buildings, non-owner-occupied two and three families, even non-owner-occupied single families. There is also a break-even point of approximately 25% of the properties, even if they're owner-occupied, would see their taxes go up. In particularly in, for example, in areas of the city where, I think that number, I'd done some rough work on it in the past, properties worth more than $600,000, single-family homes would likely see their taxes go up if you adopted a residential exemption because the dollar amount of the value exemption would more than, would be more than exceeded by the increased taxes due to a higher tax rate. So it doesn't benefit everybody. So it's really where you have a lot of non-owner-occupied properties that it makes sense, either a high, much big apartment building situation, or like I said, where there's a lot of high-end properties that are non-owner-occupied. There's also a small commercial exemption. Very few communities in the state use it. It's very, it's, it is a level of inequity that results because, to give you an example, what it is, is that it works similar to the residential exemption. It gives a break to small commercial property owners. But one of the conditions there is that no business in the property can, can employ more than 10 people in the state of Massachusetts. So what you may have is a couple of, you might have, let's say, a couple of pizza shops across the street from each other, one of which has two tenants in it, and one of which is, you know, sole tenant, and it's, it's owner-occupied. That property would get the exemption, which only has the single tenant. If the other property that has two tenants, let's say the other, the other tenant other than this pizza shop is a H&R Block that has more than 10 employees, that second building would not get the exemption. And it works the same way in the sense that any tax break you give based on the small commercial exemption, it must be absorbed by the other commercial property owners. It results in a higher tax rate for the commercial industrial properties, and it's, very few have adopted it. It was something that was stuck into an outside section of the budget back, oh, maybe 20 years ago, state budget. It was not screened by anyone at the Department of Revenue, it was not screened by anybody in the Assessors Association. It doesn't, I think it's, it's well-intended, but it doesn't really work the way people hoped it would. So not very many communities have adopted it at all. The open space exemption, really, there's only one parcel that's open space in the city. And it's, it's really, that's it. And we don't really think that there's any reason to be offering an exemption in particular for that property. So we recommend that nothing be adopted on an exemption date. I think it's up to 15% reduction in, you know, exemption. It works the same way, and the other taxpayers absorb the difference.
And Mr. Karen, that property is West Beach, isn't it?
That's correct.
All right. Just a... Just in case anybody didn't know that. Council Feldman, are you good with your question?
I am. Thanks.
Council Hausmann?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Karen, for your, you know, your detailed explanation. I'd like to sort of step back to sort of a 50,000 foot level on this order, and just clarify exactly what the nature of the vote the council needs to take to adopt the shift. So I gather, we're looking for, I don't think I've seen text of a motion to be suggested, but I gather that what we're looking for is a motion that would approve a CIP shift of 1.736. Is that essentially the nature of the motion we'd be looking for?
Yes. The equivalent, I'm trying to bring it up now. If I could just interject, Mr. Karen, to answer the question, you're actually voting the residential factor, Council Hausmann?
Okay.
To adopt a residential factor of .8868. Is that right?
880. I think, I can't get my document open. No, there it is. Okay.
About 88.6820?
Yeah, that's it. That's correct.
Okay. All right. I don't want to interrupt any other questions, but I was looking for some clarity on exactly what kind of motion we would need to offer to the floor in order to adopt the CPI.
Yeah. Actually, council would need to take two votes, one on the classification factor, the minimum residential factor, which is the .88 factor. And then the other one would be not to vote, adopt a residential exemption. Those would be the two votes that are, need to be taken by the council. There's no need to take a vote on either of the residential exemption or small commercial exemption, because the matter is not before you, because the mayor has not made a recommendation to adopt those.
So just to clarify, and Mr. Ailes, if you could jump in as well, we need two votes, one to adopt the residential factor of 88.6820. And then what was the second?
A vote not to adopt the residential fact, open space exemption, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Council Rand, please.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. My computer mute and unmute is so laggy that it's kind of a guess when it actually unmutes. So, thank you, Mr. Karen. And I learned, I have to say thank you to Mr. Perry today, too, because he spent a good hour or more on the phone with me today, just discussing tonight's vote and what it means, because I wanted to follow through with my commitment. And I remember also, Councilor Flowers made this commitment in July, when we were discussing the budget, to if there was a change in the amount of revenue we had originally planned for, then I remember we both committed to kind of reviewing the tax rate. What I learned today is that the council does not, in fact, have any capability in setting the tax rate. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but that was kind of new to me. I had always sort of pictured this moment as like, our opportunity to influence the tax rate. So I learned something new today. But what I am curious about, too, is, Mr. Karen, one of the things you started this conversation with was talking about how your, the tax rate that you set is built on the assumption of some unexpected state income coming, unexpected state revenue coming back to us. Can you just talk about that a little bit, about the process? And this is more, this is as much for my education as it is just for the conversation of it. I understand that that's not what we're voting on today, but since you did bring it up as part of your presentation, I'd love to hear more about that.
Well, the only point I was making is that there's three basic components to how we come up with a tax bill. It's the tax levy, it's the property values, and it's the classification factor adopted by the city council. There are really two unresolved issues right now, is that it's the classification vote, which hasn't happened yet. And the tax levy is not finalized, in that my understanding is that there will be a supplemental appropriation coming before the council next month. So, you know, what we look at is all the appropriations, and all the revenues, and everything else, to determine what the tax levy is with, you know, obviously, needs to meet the restraints of Prop 2 and 1/2. But, so that issue is unresolved yet, in the sense that the, all the final appropriations have not been made. I don't, you know, my original request was to set the hearing on the 7th, when I expected the appropriations to be made at the same time. We're having the hearing tonight, which is fine. It's more, as we talked about, we're voting on the allocation, which doesn't change, regardless of what the levy is. It's how do you balance commercial versus residential? I mean, so that doesn't really change. But, you know, I mean, that's where it is. I'm not, obviously, the mayor, and it's up to the mayor and Mr. Ailes to make the decisions on terms of what comes before the council for a supplemental appropriation. But, so what, when you see what the projected tax rates are, that assumes that what's anticipated coming before the council in December is approved by the council. And, you know, I have to, you know, use some criteria to come up with numbers, you know. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you so much. If I can have a follow up question.
Sure.
So just, just to kind of make sure that I'm understanding this very clearly, so the, basically, the assumption right now, which I understand, you have to make assumptions to go through this process, and, but the assumption right now is that the council will approve a supplemental appropriation to be, to fund maybe, you know, things from our, like, one time expenditures, things from our capital expenditure plan, things that we mention in financial forecast planning, rather than taking that money and, like, turning it back to taxpayers, basically. And that might even be too black and white of a, of that, but I'm just trying to break it down to its simplest form, so I can fully understand the role of the administration and the council in this process. And, Mr. Ailes, maybe that's something you want to speak to.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. President, Council Rand, the sheets that you have in front of you from Mr. Karen are assuming both, all the appropriations that have been made to date, if there's nothing else that occurs, no additional state money, and no additional appropriation, these will be the tax rates. If there is additional state money, and the council chooses to appropriate that state money, this scenario will be exactly the same. So either way, it's going to be the same. The only variation from this potentially could be if, if the council chose, if additional state money was made available, and the council chose not to appropriate all of that additional money, it could have an effect. I say could, because there are still some factors regarding the overlay and things that need to be basically recalculated once this vote takes place. But that would be a scenario where it could have an effect on the overall tax rate. Does that help clarify?
It does. And I think, too, it's my understanding, and maybe if President Guanxi threw you to Mr. Perry if he wanted to comment, but it's also my understanding that this is an unusual year, because normally, the state budget is completed by now, and we, as Mr. Karen said, we would have that additional, that supplemental appropriation in front of us already. So this is kind of an odd situation, where we're talking about the tax levy before that's finalized.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Couple of quick comments, both what Mr. Karen stated and Mr. Ailes stated, spot on. I agree with them totally in their assessment of the situation. Council Rand is right, we did have a long conversation today. In my almost 40 plus years of doing this, this is really unusual. Certainly, having a pandemic is unusual. Normally, the state budget process is certainly well done, long before this. They may be a little late in the July, even into August, they've seen, but certainly never into November, December. So it's a little bit backwards here this one time, whereby, you know, we're doing, we have to do this classification here tonight. That is a statutory responsibility of the council. Again, I'm comfortable with the presentation, both by the assessors and Mr. Ailes. Obviously, the numbers are accurate, in my view. You will, I'm pretty sure, going to hear from the mayor and Mr. Ailes on a supplemental appropriation. We've looked at, crunched some numbers, we have some sense of what we think is coming at you. It will be up to the mayor, of course, to decide what, if anything, he wants to spend in that supplemental appropriation. And of course, it's up to the council to decide whether to agree or disagree with the request of the mayor. I will add, Mr. Ailes' comment about, if you were to decide not to appropriate the funding that Mr. Cahill may request of you, that could have an impact on the tax rates. But if you, all things being equal, if you appropriate the new money coming in from the state, I agree with both of the gentlemen, it probably will not change the rate, nor the shift, or anything like that. So what you have before you would probably go through. And as Council Rand, you know, we've talked at great length about this today. Bottom line to it, I still go back to my original recommendation, given the unusual circumstances we have, I think the administration's done all the right things. They will be before you very shortly with a supplemental, I believe, once we get the State House to agree to something. And it should not change the impact on the tax rate and the shift and things of that nature. And again, I recommend that the council approve the request of the Beverly City Assessors.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Council Rand, you good on a follow up? Okay, let's go to Council Flowers, please.
Thank you very much, President Guanxi, and thank you, Mr. Karen, for your presentation. I actually, if it's okay, President Guanxi, I had a question I would still like to ask, but based on the conversation that was just unfolding, may I ask one before that as well?
You ask as many questions as you would like.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly, and this might sound like an overly obtuse restatement, but what we decide to do tonight with the shift does not then lock the council into any decision regarding the supplemental appropriation. Is that, is that accurate, Mr. Ailes, an accurate reflection of what you just were explaining?
100%. It does not lock you in.
Okay, thank you. And then the question that, also, just a clarifying question, I was looking, and this recommended shift this year is slightly higher than last year, but, Mr. Karen, if I'm understanding what you had sent to us correctly, and this is what I just want to check with you, it's slightly higher because residential properties have appreciated more quickly than commercial properties in Beverly? And so without adjusting the shift, the burden would fall disproportionately to residential taxpayers? Is that an accurate assessment of what you sent to us?
Yeah, pretty close. I wouldn't say disproportionately. Historically, what we've tried to do in adjusting the classification factor is to maintain a balance where the commercial sector pays X percent of the taxes, and the residential sector pays X percent of the taxes. And you're right, because of the appreciation, residential properties have been going, and this has been ongoing for the last almost seven or eight years now, consistently residential property values have been going up faster than commercial property values. So we've consistently had to increase the shift over the last several years in order to maintain that balance. If you were to vote to keep the shift where it is now, that would result in a, you know, appreciable increase in residential taxes, well above the 3% that the change would result in now.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hausmann?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I would say that the question or questions I have have almost entirely been answered by the preceding back and forth. I want to observe that I think the council and the administration have something of, maybe I'd say, an embarrassment of riches in the resources of Mr. Karen, Mr. Perry, and Mr. Ailes. You know, I think the good fiscal shape of the city has an awful lot to do with sort of the collective financial team that's been, you know, that we have in the city. So I just want to, want to make that comment. More broadly, I guess I would say that it's, it continues to be unfortunate, if you think about the challenges in achieving affordable housing, that we always end up in the same place year after year, which is that we increase the tax levy to the maximum allowable amount. And there does not seem to, I mean, we seem to be structurally locked into that, and there does not seem to be any municipal level solution to get out of that conundrum. We are, we are sort of trapped with that. And it is a frustration, but it's not something that, on a municipal level, we can address directly, it seems, in this kind of a conversation about setting the tax rate. So that's more of a philosophical observation, I guess, than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ames? Turn yourself on.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. It's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions. First, for the larger apartment buildings, could you just, the tax rate for them is...
Residential tax rate. They pay taxes on the residential rate. You go back to the '70s, back then, apartment buildings were considered commercial properties. But when the classification amendment to the state constitution was passed in '78, that changed the nature of apartment buildings to residential properties. The only thing I brought up about the apartment buildings is that if the, if the city were to adopt a residential exemption, that would have an extreme negative impact on apartment buildings, simply because they're not owner occupied. I mean, a quick review, a quick workup of the tax rates, you're looking at a $3 or $4, potential $2 or $3, $4 increase on the tax rate, if you were to adopt the maximum residential exemption, which would have a significant impact, obviously, on apartment buildings, and put pressure particularly those people living, we talk about affordable housing, it would make apartment buildings much less affordable if you adopt a residential exemption and increase the taxes on those properties.
That's great. And back to Councilor Feldman's questions, you mentioned that there was one scenario where the residential rate for homes over $600,000 would go up. Does that mean that homes under $600,000 would go down?
Yes. Well, they, well, you'd have a large group of properties that the increase or decrease would be, you know, not significant, maybe a range of, you know, you might be $100 higher on a residential exemption, your taxes might be $100 higher or lower than if there was no exemption. But I would say the properties that would see a significant benefit would be your lower end condominiums, and your single family homes, lower end single family homes, for example, neighborhoods between Rantoul and Cabot, those areas where we see the lowest typical values for single family homes. Those would see a distinct benefit if the city were to adopt a residential exemption. But if you're getting out into the farms, most of those properties are going to see their tax bills go up, simply because they tend to be higher than, you know, the break even point. tend to be higher than, you know, the break-even point.
That is a really interesting piece of information. So number one, I'm the World III City Councilor, and I represent a lot of those neighborhoods between Cabot and Rantoul. That's number one. Number two, we have all kinds of conversations in this community about how people can hang on to their, working-class people can afford to move here, afford to stay here, working-class people, you know, new family, first-time homeowners, as well as, as people, retired people. And so I'm not, I'd need to do more work, but I think this is a really important conversation for us to be having, because most often, it's people in those neighborhoods who have the least amount of disposable income and can least afford to pay their taxes. And I can just, I can tell you, as someone who literally represents them, I, I cannot even count the number of times that I've talked to residents who tell me that their taxes are forcing them out of the city. So I just, you know, I'm not, you know, this is, I'm really happy that you mentioned this, because I think it's just, as a city council and city government, one of the things that we ought to be talking about in terms of, you know, it's a lever that potentially can be pulled or pushed, right? And, and some people will love it, some people will not. But it's, it's the conversation. So when we're talking about the supplemental budget, or we're talking about potentially the seventeen and a half percent of local aid that our budget was not based on, but we believe, and every time I talk to Senator Lovely, she says it's coming, which is around, what, three, three and a half million dollars. Mr. Ailes, is that the dollars for the supplemental budget that we're talking about?
Yeah, it's in that range. I believe it might be slightly higher.
Okay.
Obviously not available to us to appropriate until the state budget is passed. But we're working on that communication and maybe a way to get you some information within the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
Thank you. And, you know, and of course, it's not on you, but this is totally a backwards process, right? So, and is there any room in that three and a half million dollars to affect somehow? Any relief for homeowners or renters, or is there any of that in your plans?
Yes. So, I mean, just to give you a sense of the value, you know, if we're talking about three and a half million, if the council chose to not appropriate, say, 1.1 million of that, that would equate to roughly about $5 a month for your average taxpayer. So that's kind of the, what we have in front of us. I mean, but none of those decisions, and you're aware of this, none of those decisions can be made until a communication comes before the mayor, and you, and we all have a public hearing on it for the public to attend and make comments on.
So, Mr. Ailes, is that, and Mr. Mayor, is that on the table? Is that something that is, that your team is willing to consider down the road?
Is this question to me or Mr. Mayor?
Whomever can answer.
Yeah, I mean, well, we haven't put anything forth yet. We still need to wait to see what the final numbers will be. We have a good sense of what they'll be. We also have a good many needs that we've discussed with all of you on various occasions about things that the city can do with the additional money to build back some of the reductions and cuts and draws on one-time revenues that we were relying on in anticipation of a bad year. It's also important to note that as we get through this year, if the legislature and if the governor are successful in maintaining local aid, that they effectively will have exhausted the state's rainy day fund. And we don't know what the timing is on the COVID or the impact to the tax revenues for next year hasn't fully, you know, been wrung out of the sponge, if you, if you will. So there's still a lot of uncertainty, and you all probably used to me saying that over the last year. The good, the good news is that we've all collectively made great decisions to have the city in a position where we haven't made any major reductions to service levels, where facing potential, you know, I hesitate to call it a windfall, but it's additional state revenue that we weren't counting on. So it's a good, a good problem to have right now. And we certainly would engage, you know, with all of you in that discussion as we bring forth, you know, this, this proposal. There are certainly some things, though, that I personally think absolutely must be done, would be my highest recommendation, things like paying back the stabilization funds and one-time revenues, things we've discussed that really, in a climate where revenues are stable or our legislature's attempting to keep them stable, that we really shouldn't be relying on these kind of safety nets and reserves. So I'll stop there, because I know we'll have a very robust and lengthy discussion.
And I hear you loud and clear. And I also know that while we don't know what next year we'll bring from the state, we also don't know what next year we'll bring from the feds. So it's like, you just, it's unfortunately a really chaotic time, and I'm looking forward to the financial forecast meetings like you would not believe. And so my last piece is, Mr. Karen, you talked about a certain percentage for business, X percentage, you said, for business, X percentage for residential. And it's my one little pitch to say that I think always a revenue plan is so important, because we've seen in some of the audit reports that the commercial piece of this puzzle tends to slowly decrease over time. And this is just where a strong, robust, commercial sector with a lot of commercial real estate really is a great way to offset some of the pressure on the residential, you know, tax base. And that, that's, I'm finished, but thank you very much for answering all my questions.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Great questions. Councilor Flaherty, please.
Mr. President, if I could?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mick.
Councilor Ames was asking a question to me as well. We haven't made a decision about what to bring forward, but I do want to point out, and I asked Mr. Ailes to correct me if I get any of this slightly wrong. We're talking about additional money. We're talking about supplemental money. But in fact, what we're talking about is level funding from last year to this year. So if that additional local aid comes through, on the school side, my understanding is it represents level funding from last year plus adjustments upward for additional enrollments. So, you know, level plus a bit more. And on the city side, the unrestricted general governmental aid, it represents a flat level funding number from FY twenty to FY twenty-one. So as Mr. Ailes said, the very first thing that we would propose is that that roughly million, $50,000 amount, I don't want to get the number wrong, Mr. Ailes, that we were looking to tap the stabilization, stabilization fund to underwrite our unmet needs in FY twenty-one. The first request to you folks would be to take some additional money that really is level funding us at last year's levels and not tap the stabilization fund this year. So I just point out that that's what we'll be talking about if that state money does come through. And, and just, just so we can, we can frame what we're really talking about. And, you know, as, as I think, I talked with some of you individually, we really have not been planning to come forward with a recommendation or a request to go less than the levy limit increase in property taxes. Some of you have brought that up in the, you know, during the budget process. Others are bringing it up now. We can, we can certainly continue to look at it together. I think there are a number of factors that we want to lay on the table together and weigh in having that conversation. We'll be sure to, to make sure we bring that data and that information with us when we next, you know, are in this public setting and talking about it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Councilor Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll be quick. I just wanted to set a little caution ahead. I know we talked about it a little bit tonight, but my main concern is next year's fiscal budget. I don't think there's any magic formula coming from the feds. The state, you can see they're struggling right now. My concern, we haven't furloughed anybody. A lot of businesses have furloughed people. We haven't reduced any services. We've been very fortunate. But I don't think we're going to see the implications of COVID until the next fiscal year, when we don't see the people who aren't working, aren't paying their taxes on their, on their residents, or their, and people are going to be unemployed. It's, I think, I don't want to, you know, do a black cloud over this whole, this whole talk, but I think next year is going to be the toughest year we've had in, in 20 years.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Anybody else with questions for the mayor, Mr. Ailes, Mr. Perry, or Mr. Karen? Do any members of the public that are tuned in tonight wish to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, so we'll wrap it up by making two votes. Correct, Mr. Ailes? One vote has to accept the residential factor of 88.6820, and the other one is to not accept an open space exemption? Those are our two votes tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to accept a minimal residential factor of 88.6820.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call?
James?
Yes.
Yeah.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci? Yes. And further, I would entertain a motion to not accept, not accept an open space exemption this year.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call? Ames?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci? Yes. And I just want to make a note and say, great questions by our first-time city councils going through the tax, setting the tax rate. It's a pretty complex and sometimes daunting task, but all your questions are great, and we really appreciate them. And it makes, it reminds us that have done this for a number of years, that it's still really difficult to follow. So I didn't close the public hearing, so I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And how about a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci? Yes. Our public hearing is closed. The tax rate is set. Thank you, Mr. Karen. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you, Mr. Ailes. And always, thank you, Mayor Cahill. We're going to go back to order number 246 on the leasing the electric charging spaces, and Councilor Hausmann was up to ask a question to the mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have to find my, find, find my notes. I had three comments. One of them was to compliment the administration again on moving forward this initiative, and I think it's exciting. Certainly, we want Beverly, I want Beverly to, oh, here they are, to, you know, provide leadership in this area of sustainability and renewable energy. So I think this is a great step forward. I did have a question about solar canopies, but the mayor's already answered the status of what's coming up, because it seems like that's a logical next step to include in this facility. And then just briefly, I do wonder, to Councilor Rand's questions and the mayor's answer about parking, whether consideration would be given that during the duration of Governor Baker's emergency order, that there could be temporary, you know, assessment of temporary measures regarding parking to address the issue that Councilor Rand raised. But that's something that can be discussed offline and primarily, you know, relates to her ward and to some degree, Councilor Ames' ward. So that was it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Hausmann. Councilor Ames?
Thank you. Just quickly, I was hoping the administration could just speak to the dollars, you know, surrounding the budget, surrounding this project.
You mean the lease of these spaces?
Excuse me?
You mean the lease of the spaces that were?
The lease of the spaces, if there is an investment in equipment, just, just generally is, you know, how, how it will run, just so that I and the people out there sort of understand.
Sure. So the, there's a, there's a value assessment to the spaces, but remember that we're still going to charge, charge, we're still going to charge money to the cars that park in these spaces that, you know, that hook up to the charges. So we're trying to determine, you know, what, what should be expected in an RFP process will be the, will be the value offered for these spaces to the city. Because as I said, anybody parking there during the hours that we're operating our downtown parking program, meaning 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, right, will be expected to, you know, to pay to park in that spot. The money that they're going to pay for the, for charging is going to be paid to the whoever, whoever, whoever installs the, the charging stations and utilizes them. So the infrastructure that's going to be installed is going to be paid for by the, whoever the, whoever the winner of the RFP is, right? Whoever responds to and gets the RFP, they're going to invest in the infrastructure. They're going to then be, you know, it's between them and National Grid to, you know, to be, to be billed by the grid, and then they're going to bill out to whoever charges their vehicles. So I don't know what we're going to see for any revenue off the spaces. I don't want to suggest that it's going to be anything appreciable. The RFP process would show that. And then, you know, the value of any given space in our lots and over an annual basis to the parking program, that won't change, because we'll still be charging those vehicles for that purpose. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing no further questions or comments, I entertain a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
James?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci? Yes. Ms. Kent, order number 247, please.
Order number 247. Dear Honorable City Council, in close, please find proposed amendments to Chapter 113-2C, possession or consumption on public ways and public places or on private property, and Chapter 19261, damage board signs of the city ordinance concerning alcoholic beverages and signs. The proposed change will make the ordinance consistent with Governor Baker's June 1, 2020 Order 35, clarifying the progression of the Commonwealth's Phase Workplace Reopening Plan and authorizing certain reopening preparations of Phase II workplaces, and the September 9, 2020 Order 50, making certain Phase III adjustments. As you are aware, in the spring, you approved amendments to facilitate outdoor dining during the COVID-19 pandemic. We set an expiration date of December 31, 2020. In Order 50, the governor allows outdoor table service beyond November 1, 2020. This request herein will align the city's amendment with the governor's to be effective as of 60 days past the end of the declaration of emergency date in March 10, 2020. Please initiate action on this matter at your next council meeting on Monday, November 23. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. And I'll read the ordinance.
Right. And that, that cover letter addresses Order Number 247 and Number 248.
Correct.
So you want to read 247 first?
Yes. Order 247, proposed order amending Beverly ordinance, Section 113-2, possession or consumption of alcohol on public ways and public places or on private property by amending C is set forward below. Chapter 113-2, possession or consumption on public ways and public places or on private property. Chapter 113-2, possession or consumption on public ways and public places or on private property. C, notwithstanding Paragraph A, Beverly restaurants may be allowed to operate and serve alcohol on city sidewalks in parklets, parking spaces, public ways, or other public spaces, but only upon approval by the Health Department, Municipal Inspection Department, Planning Department, and Public Safety in accordance with standards established by the Planning Department. As such news is further subject to review and approval by the Licensing Board, including conditions imposed by such board, this Paragraph C shall sunset and be no further force in effect as of 60 days past the end of the governor's declaration of emergency dated March 10, 2020. Order Number 248, Chapter 19261, Sandwich Board Signs. Proposed order amending Beverly ordinance Section 192-61, Sandwich Board Signs by amending Paragraph E is set forth below. Notwithstanding Paragraphes A through D, sandwich board signs may be displayed without a permit issued by the city council, but only upon approval by the Municipal Inspections and Planning Department in accordance with standards established by the Planning Department. This Paragraph E shall sunset and be no, no further force in effect as of 60 days past the end of the governor's declaration of emergency dated March 10, 2020.
Thank you. Just a question from Mayor Cahill. Mayor, because these are emergency orders put forth during COVID, this is something that we can pass this evening? Or do we have to refer them off to committee?
So, the Solicitor's Office told me they didn't need to be in the meeting tonight. I can call them if we need to. They did, they did say that, that they expected that you'd likely be dealing with this without going through the committee process, but I, if you want, I can get somebody in the meeting.
No, I think that that's fine, if that's what the, you know, we always like to stay on the right side of the legal office, that's for sure.
Yep.
And if it was their, if it was their opinion that we could do, do this, this evening, then I, I would wholeheartedly agree with them. Ms. Kent, did you have a comment?
I believe the last time we did not have, we could approve it right then, on that night, that same night, but.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Council Rotundo?
Counselor, Mr. President, I think I had to recuse myself in the last one, just as a precautionary measure. So I will do the same on this one again, just to.
Okay, take a walk.
Mr. President, Mr. Dole is going to be with us in a second. If you, if you want to just pose that to him, I think that would give me, could probably give us also.
Some cover, hopefully.
Comfort, I didn't, no cover, but comfort.
Okay.
And Ms. Ms. Nguyen is with us here, I don't know if she.
Yeah, if you, if I may.
Of course, Ms. Nguyen.
I'm going to, Jesse's here now, so I'll let him speak. I was under the impression that there were three, this required three meetings, so it was urgent to get on. So I'd love to hear, make sure Jesse weighs in.
Yes, Mr. Dole from the Solicitor's Office.
If, if you could pose the question to him, I just told him we need to, I didn't tell him.
Yes, I just, I just jumped on, I'm not sure what the question is.
We have orders 247 and 248, the ordinance amendments. Is this something that we can vote on tonight, or do we have to refer it off to committee?
I apologize, but I thought that it, um, oh, I, I'm sorry. I, I was confusing this with the, the prior ordinance amendment that was voted on the last meeting. This would just take the, the same procedure, you could vote on it, there'd be the subsequent reading.
Just the usual process.
Usual process, the same, and these two amendments were the same, I mean, they're further amendments to the amendments that we made. They're amendments to the amendments that we made earlier, earlier this year.
And if things continue the way they are, we're going to have to make amendments to the amendments to the amendments, which we'll be prepared to do. Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Dole now that he's here? If nobody has any questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance changes.
So moved. So moved.
Roll call, Ms. Kent. Roll call.
On 247.
Ames?
Yes.
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand? Rotundo? Oh. Guanxi, yep, got it. Yes, so that's 247, and now I would entertain a motion to approve Order Number 248.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
And Guanxi. Yes, nice work, everybody. Council Rotundo, you can come back. I guess I will send him a text. Okay. All right, let's see. You got him, Scott, thank you. Kent, order number 249.
Order 249. Dear Honorable City Council, I'm pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has received $1,000 donation from Frank Kaminsky of Kaminsky Fine Art Auction and Appraisals to benefit the Beverly Police Department. This donation is intended for COVID-19-related support services and or equipment. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donations or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this donation by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting. Thank you sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Good stuff, and I know Chief Lalash is here, maybe he wants to comment on this?
No, just we want to thank Mr. Kaminsky, it came from nowhere, and we're very grateful for anything that's going to help the offices.
Great. Thank you for hanging around, Chief, to make that comment. Does anybody else have anything to add? Then I would entertain a motion to accept the donation.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Laura Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanxi. Yes. Move on to the next page. Order Number 250.
Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to review and recommendation Mr. Matthew Filotti, 3 Sunday Drive, Beverly, to serve on the Cable TV Advisory Committee. His term is to be effective until January 31, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer to the Committee on Public Services.
Order Number 251. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation the following citizens to serve on the Design Review Board. Rachel Poor, 3 Balsam Drive, Beverly; Caroline Beard-Mason; PO Box 253, as Historic District Commission Representative; and Ellen Flannery, 30 Conant Street, as the Planning Board Representative. This term, these terms are effective December 1, 2020, until December 1, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order Number 252. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Jerry Jalebi at 26 Vine Street and Mr. Ron Janest at 9 Fennett Street, the members to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee. I respectfully request that you waive the residency requirement for Mr. Janest. Mr. Janest was born in Beverly and has long been active in the veterans community in Beverly. This term will be expired March 1, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order Number 253. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $1,750,000 grant from Mass Works to support intersection improvements at Sawyer and Tozer Roads. Governor Charlie Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Palito announced the grant awards today. 35 Massachusetts cities and towns will receive $68 million in economic development grants from the state as part of the newest round of Mass Works funding. The cities and towns include Acton, Amherst, Avon, Eyre, Beverly, Boston, Brockton, Buckland, Burlington, Chelsea, Draket, Irving, Hanover, Harvard, Haverhill, Lawrence, Leominster, Lynn, Methuen, Nantucket, Northfield, Warwick, Orange, Philpott, Pittsfield, Plainfield, Sheffield, South Hadley, Stoughton, Ware, Wayland, Wellfleet, Westbrook Field, Westboro, Wilmington, and Worcester. The Sawyer and Tozer Intersection Improvement Project will dramatically improve safety for pedestrians and all modes of transportation, expand the bicycle network. Infrastructure improvements will also support commercial development in the area and facilitate the construction of a 77-unit Harbor Light Community Partners multifamily. 100% affordable housing development. The reconstruction includes addition of sidewalks, pedestrian island, crosswalks, narrowed lanes, a left turn lane pocket on Sawyer Road, increased roadwork markings, signage, and drainage improvements. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift that can be expended for this purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at upcoming meeting. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Mayor Cahill or Ms. Barrett, do you want to address this one?
Yeah, I, I will first, and then I want to give it a chance. I, I just want to say, we're incredibly grateful for this. We're grateful for our partnership with Anchor Point, with Harbor Light Community Partners, Anchor Point, and with you folks who made all that possible. This should make this intersection a whole lot safer for everybody. Cars, pedestrians, bikers, bicyclists. It, you know, we get a lot of kids up there already at Hilltop, and at North Ridge, and there will be more kids when Anchor Point is built. With that, I, I just know both Ms. Nguyen and Ms. Barrett were instrumental in making this happen. They're both in the meeting, and I'd just like to, you know, thank them and, and give them a minute.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett? Or Ms. Nguyen?
Um, I, I will, I'll just say, I would echo what the mayor said, and I also would recognize Denise Deschamps in my office, and Catherine, and the engineering department, including Mike Collins and Eric Barber. Were all helpful in getting this grant put together. It was the second time we applied, and we had to do some revisions and, and make it stronger. And, and with all that help, we were able to do so and get the funding for this really important project. And also, just to thank Harbor Light, because they helped with the initial design. And then, you know, the next work will, will continue that. Design and engineering department will be instrumental in helping to implement it and get it designed and get it built. So it's exciting. Thank you.
Ms. Barrett, thank you.
Yes, I just want to echo everything that the mayor and Darlene said. We had a terrific team on this grant application, and we were dealing with a brand-new grants portal, which is always quite challenging. We did apply for this grant a year and a half ago and were declined. And it's always disappointing when you're declined on a grant, when you feel you have a really strong application. And one of the main reasons we were declined was the adjacent affordable housing project wasn't deemed shovel-ready. And so 18 months later, we applied, and their project is shovel-ready. And so the points on our application went up significantly. And it always feels good to apply a second time and to be awarded. So thank you to our team of Denise, Darlene, Mike and Eric, myself, the mayor. You know, everyone did such a great job, and, and many hands make light work. So I'm really grateful to work with such a great team. Thank you.
No, that's great. This is a big one, and that is obviously a problem area in the city, as it is in terms of traffic and speeding and a whole bunch of things. So that's great. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Is that Council Ames on this one?
Yes, just really quickly, because it does sit right in the middle of Ward 3, and I thank the administration, all you folks, to the bottom of my heart, because I think it's going to make a massive difference for the Anchor Point project, which is so important, plus all the commerce up there and the people who live around in that neighborhood. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Council Clarity? You saying well done, or good stuff?
Yeah, that's all I wanted to say, this, it's a great job, kind of echo what Council Ames just said. That is a tough intersection, has been for years. And I just wanted to say, it's, especially when you go after grants and you get turned down, and they give you feedback, and you have to take that criticism, I guess, if you want to call it criticism, and take it and, and bring it to fruition and make it a, a great project and bringing that money. And so kudos to everybody, Darlene and everybody else, and Catherine, for getting it done.
Council Flowers?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the thanks, but particularly wanted to note that a conversation that I was really involved in last January, so it seems like 100 years ago before COVID, was with administrators at the North Shore Consortium, which is another user that's in that neighborhood. And of course, Recovery High School is in that building. But they have older students at the consortium, something I didn't know that I learned, for whom part of their life skills learning is to take public transportation to school. And so another significantly risky part of that area that I think this will also improve were for some of those students who are trying to make their way across. So I just want to echo the thanks to everybody who worked on this. I think other users up in that area who will benefit have been named. But I'm also excited hearing about this for those students and staff at the consortium. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Council Flowers. Council Feldman?
Same, same echoing a lot of the other sentiments, I'm just so really happy about this intersection. For the last couple of years, I've been very worried about that intersection. I live at the other kind of end of it, and that's how my kids will hopefully eventually one day get to, get to high school. And I, I hadn't really, I really admire the persistence that everyone involved in this project has really exhibited, because I, I was only thinking of it from the transportation, bikes and walking standpoint. And, you know, to have it get shot down at that, for that part of it, but then build on that and have the affordable housing aspect and have the, the intersection really come together in a way that makes it more accessible to even more people after being kind of put on the back burner is, is really impressive, and I'm just, I'm thrilled, and great work. Thank you.
Yeah, good stuff. I'll tell you one thing, I'll buy somebody lunch if they can tell me where Buckland is. How's that? Anybody? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's request.
So moved.
Second.
And how about a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Yes. Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi. Yes, thank you. Ms. Kent, order 254.
Order Number 254. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review is provided in Section 2-10 of the city Beverly City Charter, Peter O'Connor to serve as chief of the Beverly Fire Department for a period of five years. Chief O'Connor's contract will be effective from December 12, 2020, until December 11, 2025. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And we can't act on this evening, we have to wait seven days on an appointment like this. So I'm going to refer that to the Committee on Public Services. And Mayor Cahill is going to invite future chief Peter O'Connor to our meeting on December 7. Thank you for taking care of that, Mayor Cahill. 255, please.
Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has received $1,000 donation from Frank Kaminsky of Kaminsky Fine Art Auctions Appraisals to benefit the Beverly Fire Department. This donation is intended for COVID-19-related support services or equipment. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grants earmarked donation or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this donation by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting, November 23. Thank you sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And I would entertain a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanxi. Yes, and thank you, if you're watching, Frank, thank you for your commitment to the city. Where are we now? Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order Number 238 from the City Clerk's Office, a renewal of lodging houses licenseings that will expire on December 31. And we are, we sent them out, and we. And we are, we sent them out, and we won't approve them until we get all the inspections back, but there may be a lag because of COVID and having the inspectors able to go into houses or the lodging houses or whatever, but we just want to put it so that we'll be ready when they do get inspected.
Okay, so please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, and hopefully we can take care of that at our December 7 meeting.
And...
239.
Order 239. Dear council members, this request is to add a handicap parking sign at 24 Mulberry Street and 22 Winthrop Ave. These locations will be added to the current city ordinance 270-49, off-street handicap parking. I have conducted quiet visits, and I have not observed any issues that would result in a conflict to public safety or in traffic. I would support the placement of a handicap parking signs in these locations. Very respectfully, Sergeant Michael Hennaberry.
Do any members of the council have any questions or comments on that one? Then I would entertain a motion to approve Sergeant Hennaberry's request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Yes. Flaherty? Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand? Matando?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Number 240.
Number 240. This is from, um, communications from CPC recommending funding for the Rupi Merrill Project is proposed by the Beverly Public Service Department.
So, we need to set a public hearing for that one, so I would entertain a motion to accept, to schedule that public hearing for Monday, December 7, at 7:20 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes. And Guanxi.
Yes, and I will ask somebody from the CPC committee to be here that evening, or ask Mr. Ailes to ask them. We are at 241.
In this one, we, order number 241, council president elected salary ordinance recommendation, Chapter 26-14, salary and expenses of the council members.
Okay, so order 241, 241A, and 241B is the work of the elected official salary committee that we appointed last January, that we unanimously appointed. This is their report and recommendation. Charter does not require us to have a public hearing on this, but I thought it would be a good idea to do it anyway, so, one, it is a financial matter, two, it gives the committee a chance to report, and it also gives our budget analyst, Jared Perry, to make a few comments on this also. Does that sound good, Mr. Perry, with you?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Very quickly, Mr. President, the committee's been working for the past year. They have forwarded, the report's been forwarded to you. They are requesting a public hearing. My compliments to the council president because of the sensitivity of the subject matter, the fact that we're doing a public hearing in an open and transparent manner, I think it's a very wise decision, and I would just hope that you'll have a public hearing on December 7. I will be working with the city clerk to post a joint meeting between their committee and your committee with the open meeting law issues. They'll be reporting to you. Also available that night will be the consultant that was hired by the city from the Collin Center at UMass to answer any questions you may have, and then we'll just proceed from there. So, that's pretty much it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. So, I entertain a motion to hold that public hearing at 7:30 PM on Monday, December 7.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 242 from BOF, notice of project change to Endicott College. The binder and the maps are available at my office. They're just, cue, I couldn't send them to you, and there's only one.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Order number 243.
Order 243, National Grid and Verizon petition for locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining fixtures along and across countyway.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for Monday, December 7, at 7:15 PM.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
Guanxi.
Yes. Order number 244.
Order 244, we do not have to, remember we talked about, this is not needed because of the ordinance, so we can refer to the planning board.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file order number 244 and refer to the planning board.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Motions and orders.
Order number 236, be entertained by the city council of Beverly as follows. Ordered in the year 2020, proposed order amending Beverly ordinance, Section 69-4, vacations by adding paragraph G, in order to address vacation leave issues arising from the COVID-19 pandemic, notwithstanding paragraph F. Number one, the December 31, 2020 deadline for carryovers shall be extended to April 30, 2021. And number two, employees should be allowed to carry over up to 12 vacation days through the remaining months of calendar 2021. This provision is applicable only to vacation carryover from calendar year 2020. The first reading was on November 9. It was in the legal ad, was in the Salem News on November 13, and the final passage is tonight, November 23, 2020.
Uh, questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the ordinance. All in favor, aye?
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a request by Councilor Flaherty to speak.
Oh, really? I didn't see it. Thank you. Council Flaherty, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilor. Can you just clarify, maybe the mayor can speak to it, the reasoning for this order?
Uh, Mayor Cahill is not in the meeting anymore, Council Flaherty.
Do you know, does anybody on this, any of the councilors know? Is it because they weren't able to use their vacation time during this time? Even though, okay.
So, they gave an extension because some people, you can only carry over two weeks vacation after the calendar year. So, in this ordinance, they gave two extra days, and they also extended the ordinance, so it would be till April that we could use our vacation, not December 31.
Okay.
Because we can't carry it over, and we really couldn't use it during COVID.
You couldn't go on vacation during COVID? You mean take time off?
Well, it was hard to take time off for someplace. I don't want to speak for the mayor, but that's, I know for me, I couldn't take time off.
Right.
But it sounds like that was his rationale. Okay.
I'm not 100%, but I'll vote in favor of it, because I think what Ms. Kent says is correct. I think there are certain people who weren't able to take vacation because they were there, but then there are others who I believed, you know, necessarily weren't, you know, doing 40 hours worth of work during COVID. It's, you know, I see it not only, I'm not saying the city of Beverly, but just throughout you, people who are working at home sometimes aren't, and when businesses aren't open, they're not working, but I'm not gonna not vote for it because of that, but I just think it's a concern when other businesses are closing and people are out of work and we're extending the vacation time. It's just a concern, that's all.
Okay, good point, Council Flaherty. So, I almost did it the old way, the pre-COVID way, but I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
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 Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Reports from committees.
Reports from committees. Hold on one sec. I almost made it through it. Order number 227 from Legal Affairs, Constable Ms. Nancy Cece from 15 Kennedy Drive.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
Yes. Wanted to reappoint.
Yes.
And, uh, order number 230, order for cable TV, order, Mr. Cahill, Brian Whitehead.
Council Feldman?
Sorry.
Microphone.
Do you want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
Order number 230, communications from mayor, appointment for cable TV Advisory Board Committee, Mr. Kyle Sweeney and Mr. Brian Whitehead.
I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
More call?
Ames?
Yes.
Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes.
That's all I got.
That's all we have, great. Okay, our next city council meeting will be Monday, December 7. We have quite a few things to do that evening, but I'm going to ask everybody to take a look at the letters of interest and resumes that have been forwarded to us. You want to go now, Stacy, or you want me to finish? Can I finish?
You finish, for sure.
Um, I'll ask Ms. Kent to put on the agenda discussion of, discussion of candidates to fill the Ward 6 seat, which will be vacant as of December 31 this year. We'll put that on our agenda, and hopefully we can wrap it up and make an appointment at our final meeting on December 21, our final regular meeting. I've spoken with Mayor Cahill about the possible money coming back to the city and the supplemental appropriation, and he would like to present the master plan to us. So, we're looking at having a special meeting the week of December 14. It won't be the 14th, the Monday, it could be the Tuesday or the Wednesday. It looks like it'll be Wednesday because Bev Camp has a commitment on the Tuesday, but I'll keep you all updated, and we'll have that information before our meeting on the 7. So, that's all I have. Councilor Ames?
Just really quickly, I wanted to share with everyone that about a month and a half ago, I had a resident come to me and talk to me about the Elliot Chambers Memorial at the corner of Rantoul and Elliot, and it had grown into some disrepair, overgrown, needed a little work, and I'm really just happy to report that CVS stepped up and did the maintenance on their own. So, it's just always nice when you have a civic partner like that, you know, a corporate partner, you know, for the city. So, I just wanted to thank them, you know, and say, you know, it's the season, right, of Thanksgiving, and here we are, so, thank you.
That's great. It was the former Ward 3 city councilor, John Burke, who was instrumental, and he actually did a documentary on it, and was instrumental in making sure that that memorial got placed there. Good stuff, it was a terrible...
Exactly. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add?
I do. Thank you. Just, just in case anyone else is watching out there, there's the Ward 2 Civic Association meeting is tomorrow evening, at 7 o'clock, and you're welcome to tune in. You can, if you are interested in going to the meeting, maybe connect with me, and I'll send you the link, or you can connect with the Civic Association through their Facebook page.
Good stuff.
Always a good time.
Way to get it out there. Councilor Flowers?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, especially for those who might be watching, that Captain Hagerty had sent to all of us information about the Officer Sean Connolly Memorial Toy Drive that's coming up in December.